Good evening. Thank you for coming. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Monday, May 13th, 2024. It is 7:01. Before we get started tonight, we do have a quick recognition. The Glean Buchanan Lions Club would like to present a $500 donation to the Buchanan Police Department to use towards the purchase of a body worn cameras.
On behalf of the Buchanan Glean Lions Club, again, we think the Police Department does a great job and we want to make sure that we support them. So we have a $500 check to present to Harvey to use towards the purchase of those vests. Do have another announcement. This year, the Buchanan Lions Club will be in Buchanan for 90 years. So this is our 90th year. Mr. Swims grandfather, I think, was probably the oldest one that's still in our club. And I think he's been a member for over 65 years.
66, I think, this year. And your great-grandfather was one of the charter members. But your grandfather says that he was there in Yurtro at Charter Night.
As only Dick.
That sounds like something he would say. He turns 90 this year, so.
So he was there.
He would be there. The timeline works.
Well, thank you very much for your generous donation. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on a individual liberty and justice world.
We have roll call, please.
Denison?
Here.
Whedon?
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Present.
Swam?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Someone can make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make that motion with, I want to make a point about putting something on the next agenda because I was gonna, I want to discuss all of these committees that we have. And I want to formally make a request to have it on the agenda.
We don't need that to approve this one, do we? I mean.
Well, I was gonna put it on this, you know, I don't want to put it on this agenda.
Do you want to talk about it under Communications, maybe?
Let's, if we can. And then, so we have a motion to approve the agenda. Is there support?
I'll support.
We have roll call, please?
Denison?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This time I'd like to open it up for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment on an agenda item, please make your way to the podium and state your name for the minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Yeah. Genie.
Genie Harris, 320 Bluff Street. And I would just like to briefly speak on the Buchanan Home Repair Program, the Buchanan Home Demolition Program. And I am just asking the Commission to please consider approving this. We have homeowners here from the north side that can really use these funds for home repair. So, and this is my request, just to ask you to consider approving this. And thank you to Rich, to Ashley, for their diligent work in getting this grant. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Seeing none, let's move to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money. I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to item nine, reports by departments, committees, and boards. Item A, the Community Development Report from Community Development Director Rich Murphy and Assistant Community Development Director Asthea Regal.
Thanks, Mayor, Commission, Members of the Public, Rich Murphy, Community Development Director. Good evening. Two items tonight. The first one is a request for you to approve our RFP for the third-party administrator for our CDBG grant. Remind you that we were approved for $300,000 of CDBG funds, which is exciting. And we, CDBG funds are federal funds that require significant reporting and other data maintenance requirements. So it is recommended that we engage with a third-party administrator, especially on our first round, so that we can understand all the requirements and make sure that we're in compliance. So that money for the third-party administrator comes from the grant. In fact, it's best practice that you are approved with this administration money. So we have done that. We've had several calls with CDBG representatives, as well as potential third-party administrators, one of which works in Niles and is very familiar with the region and with our community. So we, we hope that she does submit for the RFP. But in accordance with prior RFPs, we've always gotten approval from the Commission. So that's why we're here tonight.
How much is this gonna cost?
We have set aside $50,000 for administration per the, and that's under the umbrella of the grant. And that was recommended to us by the field expert that handles our region, that that's how much we want to have in there.
So we're, I've called you three times. You never called me back. I could have asked you some of these questions on the phone. But $300,000, and we're gonna spend $50,000 to give away that $300,000?
Allocated $50,000, yes. No, we may not spend it all. Our intent is that we hire the third-party administrator and we set up the program. And then we learn how to do the program in-house. But we don't want to take on these funds. This is, we've gone into this project eyes wide open. We knew there's a lot of requirements, reporting, deadlines that you can't miss. So all, on all the calls we've had with the CDBG staff, they've recommended this amount and this amount of flexibility for the third-party administrator.
This just allows us to be accountable for the money that gets reinvested by the not taxpayer money, federal government money.
Correct. And do it right. Start the relationship off well with our field, our regional contacts. Go back for more.
Great.
Hopefully spend less on administration as we go.
Can you really briefly just describe what this person would do?
Yeah, I mean, they, they have to make sure that all the program requirements are aligned to the federal requirements. So with the CDBG funds, there's extra restrictions, like there's income requirements that you have to qualify to be eligible. That's one of them. There's environmental review activities that have to happen, federal funds. So there's specifications for those environmental reviews. There's deadlines, there's reports that need to be filed. And then there's a closeout of the grant. So those are some of the activities that they would, they would do.
So would this person, we wouldn't necessarily need to have them here the entire time or doing the program, right? We would, I mean, if we can get somebody trained, or if we can pick up on making sure we know how to do all those things.
Yeah, I mean, we want to learn how to fish. So if the expert comes in, teaches us how to fish, we know the program, we know, we don't, we're not blindsided by this deadline or that requirement or that environmental report. We know it all front because we're working with an expert who's done it for 25 years. And so then we can learn how to do it. We can create the documentation and, and the program deadline and begin to do it in more in-house ourselves.
And just to confirm, this isn't a once and done thing, right? We can keep doing this over, like, over and over again, right?
Correct. Yes.
But I still didn't get my question answered about how much we're actually gonna have to spend upfront. Are we gonna have?
Up to $50,000. That's what we're allocating for administration. We.
But does that mean we're gonna have to hire somebody specific? Is that?
It's a, it'll be an independent contract.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So we're gonna hire a federal worker to give away federal tax dollars. We're gonna pay tax dollars to hire somebody with tax dollars to give away tax dollars?
We're hiring a third-party administrator, which has been strongly recommended to us to do by the program operators and by other communities that we talked to. We talked to six or eight communities in the region, and they all recommended that we hire a third-party administrator, as did the field officer for CDBG. They, they recommended up to $50,000. Maybe we don't need all that. But if the government would relax all the requirements, then we wouldn't have to burn more money on administration.
So who did you contact that's doing this? Is it Niles? Is it Glean? Is it Three Oaks?
Several communities.
Several, that doesn't mean nothing to me.
Niles was one of them. Bridgman.
I have the list in there.
Yeah, the list is in there.
Okay, so some local, like, towns, colleges, I don't have my.
Well, I apologize, you know, that everybody might think that I'm beating up on him. But I have called him four times and he never returns his phone calls to me. So I would have asked all these questions on the phone.
It's fine. You can ask him now.
I'm going to. The thing about it is, is I've got family members that was involved in some of this. And it's so entrenched in bureaucracy, the person in the house really doesn't get anything. Or you have people that basically only do federal government grant work, and they're not some of the most upstanding people out there. Now, it might be a little bit different now than it was 30 years ago, but I kind of doubt it.
I'll remind you, we went to the Commission for permission to pursue the CDBG grant, and I believe you, you all approved it.
Rich, that's not even the point.
And so now we're here, moving forward on the grant. You've already given us permission. And so now we're getting permission on the hiring because we're about to go live with the program.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I move to approve the RFP for a third-party administrator for Community Development Block Grant, chill, round two.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money. I'll support that.
Thank you.
I got one more question. Is this for the city, the whole city, or is this?
We're targeting the north side neighborhood.
But what do you mean by?
We, we are developing that programming, but we're targeting priorities, submittals in the north side neighborhood.
Well, the maps that you sent out was everything north of Front Street?
The way I read it, it was Main Street East, and then?
Front Street North.
Front Street North. Yeah, Main Street East.
So it's the north half of the city?
Correct.
Pretty much. And that was, that was the territory that was outlined in the original grant proposal.
Yeah.
I think it's our low to moderate income territory primarily. Yeah, understood.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have support. Can we roll call, please?
Bianski?
No.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to item two?
Okay, second item is related. We're really excited to announce that we'll be working in partnership with Hunter Foundation and Michigan Gateway Community Foundation on a program that targets the north side neighborhood for a home repair fund and demolition fund. Right now, we, we've been busy in boardrooms pitching this program. And we've won now up $50,000, but we do anticipate more money to come in from other agencies and organizations. But based on vision for Buchanan, where we, over several month period, we identified the north side neighborhood as the neighborhood that perhaps been, has been neglected over a period of decades. The neighborhood that arguably has the most need for home repair, perhaps has the most need for demolition, the most need for infrastructure upgrades. We're doing that with a lot of the Victory Park work that we've been busy with over the last several months. So this money is less restrictive. So we don't have to jump through all the CDBG hoops with this money because it's money from our local partners. And so we wrote the programs, and the programs are before you. And we'd like to receive approval on the programs conceptually so that we can go live with them and begin to address the several properties that we know in the north side neighborhood that either need repair, which will help the overall health of the neighborhood, public safety. It will also, I think, stimulate investment in that neighborhood because a lot of the curb appeal will be, appear more attractive and well-maintained. Additionally, the demolition funds, we know that there's some real egregious needs in, that we've been able to kind of not move the ball on. Well, this will give us resources to address those handful of homes that, that maybe are just not able to be rehabbed and that can be demoed and then brought back to greenfield and eventually infill development.
So is there any specific things that we can do so that them particular properties are targeted for this money? Because I know the two properties that are very much in need.
Yeah, we're gonna do an awareness campaign. We may even go door-to-door and pass out flyers. We're gonna work with the.
Well, we won't need to do that if we know the people that own the property that have, are burnt down.
We're gonna work with the neighbors. The neighbors know the issues in the neighborhood. So we have a really strong relationship with the north side neighbors. And we've already had discussions of people that intend to pursue the demolition and home repair grants.
Have we had conversations with the owners of the property so that we can do this?
Yes.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion. Tell me to say it out?
If you would.
I move to approve the Buchanan Home Repair Program and Home Demolition Program as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money. I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
One thing I just wanted to remind everybody, Commission, Members of the Public, we have a really exciting event, June 8th. It's a Saturday at noon, and it's going to be the ribbon cutting for the Victory Park Pavilion and Park. We've been busy over the last several months making improvements there, and it really is coming together. If you haven't been by, the new grass is now starting to grow in, the pavilion's up, there's a, there's a new water fountain, there's, we're gonna, gonna complete the resurfacing of the basketball court. We have new basketball rims and nets. DPW has been, and Tim Lynch have been amazing in our support of infrastructure improvements as well, including some sidewalk repair and assistance. We have brand-new benches out there. A lot of this money came from the Shallen Foundation, that James Busby brought to the table and brokered that grant for the neighborhood. And so we're looking forward to this really exciting event. We want, we encourage the Commission, Members of the Public, to attend. I know that there's gonna be people from the north side who live there, or grew up there, or used to live there, that will be coming back for the event. There's gonna be food and, and fellowship and, and just lots of good vibes for just this great work that's being done. And I really gotta hand it to the, the activism of the north side neighbors who have really been with us at every step of the way, who show up to the meetings, who show up at the committee meetings, make decisions, who bring resources to the table as well. And, and I, according to James Busby, the Shallen Foundation is interested in, if they like what they see, which I know they will because it looks amazing, they'll come back for perhaps round two of improvements. So, good vibes in the north side, June 8th at noon. Love to see you there. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, before you leave, when we move down to item 10, under unfinished business, the, this ordinance, can you just stay put just for one second?
Yeah.
And just explain really briefly why we're doing this again, just for anybody who is here.
And you're talking about the?
The ordinance number 2024-05/438. Consider the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2024.05/438. An ordinance amending the city Buchanan zoning ordinance, Article 7, R3 multifamily zoning district, Article 21, group homes and adult foster care facilities.
Okay, so it was brought to my attention by the operators of Buchanan Meadows. They've been there for decades, I understand. Run a really tight, good operation. That they, their project predated our existing zoning code. So our existing zoning code is 2003, I believe. So they're not even in compliance with our existing zoning code, let alone the expansion that they want to pursue. So we looked at this, we worked with our city attorneys, we drafted an amended ordinance that we thought was in line at best practice. And we brought it to the Plan Commission, who unanimously approved that amendment, went through the entire process of notifying adjacent neighbors and public, publishing the notification for the public hearing. Received little or no feedback on it, except for positive feedback. So now we, the law states, once it gets through the Plan Commission, we bring it to you. It, it would allow for the planned expansion of Buchanan Meadows just to the north of their existing footprint, which would be 20 beds. And it would allow for them to potentially, over maybe a period of years, develop the land that they own adjacent just to the east of their existing footprint. And all of this was approved with findings, approved by the Plan Commission that, you know, these are, these are significant investments, several millions of dollars likely, on a very efficient use, because we get all the tax money, but there's not the typical type of footprint or, or traffic. And we have, in our master plan, proved repeatedly throughout the master plan process, that we have a great need to expand housing in this adult daycare facility arena. So all of it seems like kind of a no-brainer. And we have developers at the table who are hoping you guys approve this tonight so they can move on for their expansion.
Perfect. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2024 dot 05 slash 438 as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money. I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to new business expenditures. You have questions this evening?
I talked to Tim about several things. Maintenance was an issue. Fixing our lawn mowers in the spring when we should be doing it in the fall. We're constantly paying these engineers for god knows what. The attorney's always an issue. I talked to him specifically about a $400 toilet repair. It was explained quite well. Nothing else other than that, the Christmas ornaments, a lot of stuff that the DDA used to do that is no longer, does do because it's no longer around.
Yeah, I questioned the Christmas ornaments, too. It sounded like we got a really, we got 25% off our normal purchase price.
Well, it goes back to repairing our equipment in the fall rather than in the spring, too.
Somebody like to make a motion?
Also move.
You mind reading it, please?
I move to approve the expenditures for May 13th in the amount of $106,694.06.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support. Money got it.
Money?
We have roll call, please?
Denison?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to item B, under new business, the Attorney Engagement Proposal. Mr. Lynch?
Okay. As many of us know, our current attorneys have switched firms from the Kotz Sangster Group to Butzel Long. So before us tonight is a proposal from the new firm to continue legal services with our current attorneys. Same attorneys, same, same location. The proposal is to continue working with the same attorneys at the same rate as approved by the Commission last spring. Considering we have several ongoing projects with the current attorneys, and there would be significant challenges if we were to switch to a different firm at this time, I'm going to recommend we continue our engagement with our attorneys now at the Butzel Group. Currently, I am knee-deep in collective bargaining issues with our attorney Derby, as both our AFSCME agreement and our police agreement expired June 30th, and we have union negotiations scheduled in the coming weeks. If we do get cleared of these and other projects with the firm in the future, the Commission may consider retaining another firm. But in all practicality, it makes sense to continue our, with our current attorneys with the Butzel firm. Therefore, I recommend we approve the engagement proposal from the Butzel Long Firm before us this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Well, everybody knows my opinion. But I've also talked to you extensively about how bad you need a lawyer, and a lawyer that's been doing it, you know? But I will really hard look into a different service after September. I'll give you till September. But I'd like to look for a different lawyer after September. I'll make the motion to approve the Attorney Engagement Proposal with Butzel Long. Mullet Drew, attorney as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving down to item C, under new business, Structural Engineering Services Proposal?
Okay, this engineering proposal is AKA the Hoven Wall, Front Street Retaining Wall that is in need of repair. At our Commission work session a couple months ago, the Commission made it clear that the repair of the Front Street Retaining Wall is a top priority. I have since reached out to Jones Petry Rafinsky, an engineering firm that performs a multitude of civil and architectural engineering projects relating to roads, water sewer, and streetscape work. I have contacted several of their current clients as references, and I have found that each client is very satisfied with their work, pricing, and the resultant projects. And I reviewed some of the pictures of some of their work that they've done. Some beautiful work. I've spoken to Goshen, Bristol, Bremen, and Fort Wayne representatives regarding the firm. So considering safety, liability, and our locate, and its location, it is important we approach this work in a professional and responsible manner. For our retaining wall project, JPR, will perform services, including the design of a reinforced concrete retaining wall approximately 450 feet long. Their services include performing a topographic survey to facilitate construction accuracy, performing a soil investigation to supplement and aid in the wall design and construction, and preparing and providing a CAD drawing of the existing site conditions, including surface contours. Additional deliverables for the project will include a complete set of structural design drawings stamped by a professional engineer licensed in Michigan, and a construction cost estimate. And upon completion of the design, bidding services will be provided consisting of managing the bidding phase, including preparing the bidding documents, including plans and specifications, conducting the pre-bid meeting, answering any questions from contractors regarding the plans and specifications, and assisting in final negotiations and contract preparations. The estimated fees for the design and associated work are listed in the proposal and total out at $17,500, including the bidding services portion of the work. The fee seems very reasonable and considering the deliverables to be provided, and I would recommend Commission approval of the Jones Petry Rafinsky proposal to initiate the process of improving an important structure on one of our major streets. So that's my recommendation. I looked at their fees. I looked at their fees on, for comparable work, the, the design engineering is five to seven percent, including the bidding. I think that's very fair and reasonable, and as I mentioned, I would recommend we proceed and get this work going.
Did they say where this fell into their schedule, how soon they could?
Within six weeks, they can get started.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion, but it just hurts me to spend money to spend money, but I've had this discussion, and I mean, that's where I come from. I just want to explain all the time, I'm looking at the money all the time, and it just breaks my heart. But I move to approve the structural engineer services proposal from JPR in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars as presented.
Is there support?
This is Money, I'll support.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then item D, an update on Days Avenue and McCord Creek culvert.
Okay, here we go. Another challenge in our life here. Okay, we've been working with our design engineers for a fix to the failing culvert at Days Avenue. Abbott Marsh has proposed three conceptual designs with rough cost opinions ranging from nine hundred thousand to one point one million dollars. I should note, these are very preliminary cost opinions, and the three concepts include a three-sided concrete culvert, steel sheet piles capped with a bridge and sidewalks, and open channels and bridges, which happens to be the most costly and longer timeframe in the permitting process. So that one essentially got eliminated pretty quick. Factors considered the constructibility of each concept, including the project timeline, creek impacts and permitting, the existing instability of the structures. Upon evaluation, we have opted to go with the most efficient concept, the steel sheet piles, due to the consideration of the above items. The project is being planned to account that the extent of the work will not be known until the dismantling of the existing infrastructure is in progress. Then we'll be able to determine what really needs to be done. We are currently discussing design and bid options to expedite the process. The permit should be submitted to Eagle this month with approval in mid to late June, barring any unforeseen permitting issues. We hope to bid within a month, with construction beginning potentially in July. Traffic control can be handled by the city to help reduce costs. Ample construction space will help to minimize the timeline of construction enclosures, so the more area we can cordoned off, it'll be better for the construction. However, we have businesses and organizations to consider. Therefore, we are developing a committee to work with the businesses and organizations to come with the solutions that are most beneficial for the project going forward. And we're working on it now, and we're still, it's all in process, and more information will be forthcoming.
Well, you know, most of the problem is people are going to have to actually walk a block to go somewhere. You know, I mean, and I am being sarcastic, but we're in oxygen, you're supposed to walk so many steps anyhow, so really, isn't that the biggest problem? Is people having to walk?
Well, in, in access to the businesses in that immediate area.
Well, they all have front door access, and we have parking at the center, city center. I mean, I'm trying to make your job easier, whether it sounds like it or not, but that's basically the problem, and the state of Michigan. I mean, people don't understand that half this cost is regulations by our wonderful state, the people that we put in office. So, um, do you need a motion or anything?
No, we're, well, if we're going to spend some money, I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Yeah, I just have one comment. I, I know you're all over it, but is there an option where, or is there a discussion around just opening it up to get rid of the bad concrete and creating a new entrance from Oak Street through the existing parking lot? I don't know if that, when we, when we put, we count, start counting these pennies, I don't know if that's going to make sense or not, just a thought.
Well, the first major impact is the library.
Right.
And they need access to their buildings.
Yep.
And I don't know if they would take kindly to accessing from Oak Street.
Sure, no, I get it, I understand it.
The other thing that's in play there, though, Patrick, is the, where the mill race, it also feeds through the library parking lot and into that creek.
Mm-hmm.
Like right behind where it sunk.
Okay.
So something needs to be done there anyway.
Right.
I mean.
And I'm sure most of this cost is taking it all out, right? Not putting it back as much, putting it back together.
A lot of the discussion we had with Abbott Marsh, I mean, they understand our situation and that we don't, we're not made of money. So they're considering drawing up the RFP documents to say, you know, to kind of to describe the work as, take it apart and figure out how much you have to replace. So it's going to be kind of an open-ended contract with whoever does the work, because we're not going to tell them to fix the whole thing, because if they get back fifty feet and it's in perfectly good shape, they're going to stop.
Right.
And we're only going to spend the money that we have to spend. So that's kind of the direction that they're headed right now.
Well, we need to make sure that, you know, if it's good after fifty feet, is it good for three years, or is it good for fifty years?
Right.
You know, go ahead and, and yeah, one other thing, Tim, is, you know, is there any grant money out there? I mean, the federal government's just a wash, Gretchen's got all billions, is there any money we can suck out of these people?
It's, it's pretty quick timeline to be getting grants, but if there's something out there and we're, we're eligible for it, most definitely.
Can we post date things? Can we start lying like the rest of them and change our application dates?
It's not the transparency we're looking for.
Well, it's not transparent.
All right.
I do have a question for Harvey on this, because I responded to a Facebook quote, so what happened to Bucky? I was going to ask Mike. So, can we go on, can we go on record?
I can tell you.
Where he's at?
I would rather not say where he's at, but he's safe, just in case somebody.
Well, there's a lot of people who were concerned.
No, at the, at the beginning, at the beginning of last week, when the forecast showed there was going to be a couple of days of really heavy rains, like an inch of rain, if you look, if you look now underneath the entrance to the library where it's blocked off, the, the wall that's holding up the bridge is starting to cave in. And Mike was really afraid that, even though the foundation Bucky was sitting on looked strong and it looked like it wasn't moving, we didn't want to take a chance, so they went down and removed it from its anchor bolts.
Good to know.
So that it wouldn't end up in a creek if the wall.
He's safe.
There are those.
Bucky is fine.
He's fine.
Okay, moving down to communications, we have a meeting change.
So just to make everybody aware, because of the holiday, it was posted when we first did the notices for the city commission meeting, that it would be Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, it is not Monday, so mark your calendars, please. Also, on that day, there will be two public hearings, one for an Oprah exemption certificate and for the budget. So Tim will be presenting, doing the budget hearing, and then presenting the fiscal year budget as well for consideration. But it's Tuesday, not Monday. Next week.
And then while we're, while we're having communications, can we plan on having a discussion at the next meeting regarding boards and?
Committees?
Some of the, some of the committees that, that used to report to the DDA, we, we need to figure out how all those are going to work together, so we need to have a discussion.
Figure out what committees can get along with.
We, we, we can clear up how you want to title it.
Join the trail committee and the common committee?
And Smackus, he said.
Do you want, okay.
And the live Buchanan committee?
So you want lists of all committees, and then who, how you want, do you want to see how they report to you now, and then maybe be able to report to you in a future?
If you could do that, that would be wonderful.
Are, are we looking to consolidate a few of these?
I think you're looking for reporting-wise, because.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't heard from, the common committee hasn't really reported to us, the farmer's market hasn't reported to us, the tin shop hasn't reported to us. It'd just be nice to be able to make sure we know who's doing what, and there's clear lines of communication amongst all of us, because there's a lot going on at the common, and a lot of that is all happening in the common. You have the tin shop, and the farmer's market, and all the concert series. So it'd just be good to know who's, who's speaking to who, I think.
Was Tim Gainis' only board seat the Smackus one, or did we have anything else? Okay.
Nope, just Smackus was his only board seat.
Okay.
Smackus, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
That was Tim's only seat.
Tim's, Gainis' only seat on a board.
Right.
He didn't have anything else, so.
I went to one of them, and I asked a lot of questions. There was something I did want to bring up, though, too. What is the actual deadline for putting something on the agenda?
Uh, it's usually Tuesday at five PM the week prior.
The week prior, not the day before?
No.
So the week prior?
Because the city commissioner, the commissioners like to have enough time in advance to actually look at their packets and read through them, and if you've ever looked at our packets, they could be anywhere between twenty to three hundred pages long. So we try to our best as staff here, we try to get that out to them by Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday night, so that they have ample time to look through everything and ask questions if they need to. For public-wise, I ask the same thing, Tuesday at five PM the week prior to a city commission meeting. If you let me know you might have something going on, I can kind of hold off the agenda until last possible minute, but, so.
And the only other thing was, you know, like if you run into a situation like you did this week?
Mm-hmm.
Don't send it out to us till you get your budget. I mean, it, you know, till you get your budget.
My, all the expenses?
Right. There's no sense in redoing it.
Well, Courtney had sent the expenses out before I had updated the agenda, so.
Okay.
All right, all right. Okay, moving down to public comment on non-agenda items, if you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes.
Chief Burnett, just real quick, I just wanted to thank the Buchanan Glean Lions Club for the donation given. I wasn't able to say that, Jerry, you went on something else, but thank you very much, we really greatly appreciate that. And we're also asking for the community to keep in your prayers Ruth Rider with the passing of Wayne Rider last week, as their funeral is coming up.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Good evening, my name is Monroe, I'm from one eighteen Schumer Parkway. I have a question, and I have a concern for the black community. I know I'm not very popular, and I probably won't be popular with you tonight, but that's okay, I can live with it. I've lived here for twenty-two years, my family has lived here, my mom and dad lived here for forty years, and my uncle before that lived here fifty years. In all those years, I have never seen the city put so much interest into the black community. It is something that we asked for for many, many years. It is something that caused me to start One Buchanan for that purpose, so that we can treat everybody equally. So my concern now is, when we first started our meeting with, with Andrews University, the meeting that they invited everyone to, I was there to represent One Buchanan, there was not one black person or a person of color at that meeting. I remember asking why there wasn't, you guys were all there, so you can tell me that, yeah, I did say that. And I was told by Heather, that is correct, we don't have anybody here of color. She instructed Rich Murphy to bring them to the table, and that's how they were invited to the table, not because you were concerned, but because they were not even, they were an afterthought. So my fear here is gentrification. I am really concerned, and that was the one thing that they spoke to me about at the second meeting that we had. I find it wonderful that we're finally doing something at that community, at that neighborhood. However, I also have this terrible gut feeling that gentrification is part of it. All of a sudden, we are, you know, in New York City with Harlem, it started with, you know, the New Yorkers making sure that all of the parks were taken care of, that the waterfront was taken care of, then they started giving them grants to fix their homes and to deal with the demolition, and then all of a sudden, without realizing it, they all said yes, because finally someone was paying attention, and someone made them feel that they were heard. However, a couple years later, they were thrown out of that community because they could not pay the taxes, they could not live there. So in case you don't know what gentrification is, please do your research, ask the questions. And one thing I would recommend to all of you, that you maybe have a contract with a city that says that if you do sell, or if they, if something gets sold, that you have first priority, that your families living in different towns have first priority to buy, because otherwise, you're going to find yourself being thrown out of that community. I'm just, I know you don't want me to say this, but you have to understand how the white world works, okay? Please, do the right, do the right thing, and you can laugh at me all you want, but you know, just please, do your homework, ask the questions, make sure that you get some sort of something that gives you the opportunity to buy first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
I just want to clarify the record on a vision for Buchanan. A key stakeholder group was heavily involved in, are acknowledged, in the acknowledgements of a vision for Buchanan. The Northside Neighborhood Group, Jeannie Harris, John Brown, Barb Brown, James Busby, Mr. Kelly, Joe Bibbs, Kyra Clark, Shreebro Gidry. And those are the people who we, three years later, have the strong avenue of communication, that we built the relationship based on trust, and we'll continue to work together. Gentrification is a concern that we're keenly aware of, and we are in discussions about that. And we have, part of our project North Star is focused on trying to mitigate gentrification and how we can have homeowners who are there, stay, stay home, ride the equity wave, and benefit from the overall neighborhood improvement. We have been working with a local gentleman who, a consultant, Salma Tucker, who grew up in the Northside Neighborhood. He's for the, former communications director of the Michigan Municipal League, and now he started his own firm. Part of Project North Star will be education modules on, on homeownership, on investments, on loan advocacy, mortgages, how government works. This will be part of our three-legged stool of the Nor, Project North Star that will deal with home repair, demolition, edu- education and empowerment is the third, is the second important aspect, as well as invest, developer investments and partnerships with the city. So one, one thing that I bring up, I was one of the first ones in my family to, to go to college, and so my parents really didn't know how to do it. And so they, we were kind of like going down the hallway and reacting and saying, you know, well, this deadline, that deadline, what's FAFSA, what is this work, you know? And when I came back from college, I started a family, and I've been talking to my children since they were probably ten or eleven years old about college and how to transfer what I know to them, so that they can pursue that path. And I see that homeownership is, is a lot like that. We have homeowners who are in that, a good amount of homeowners in that neighborhood, and we basically need to have a discussion about how government works, how grants work, how home improvement and demolition can build equity in your home, because we are aware of the postcards that go out and say, hey, sell your home, and it's, it's a broker who wants to basically buy homes, it's happening in every neighborhood across America right now. So we are keenly aware of the gentrification issue, we are discussing it with the neighbors, and we will have as the third part of our plan, an aspect to mitigate it and to make, and the goal is, how do we get more people who are already there to stay there, to benefit, to build wealth, and to encourage their, their family and the next generation to buy in now and build wealth. So it is a, it's a, it's a tricky thing, but we are out on, I'd say, the forefront of the discussion, and Buchanan is very aware of this, and we will continue to have those discussions with the Northside neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Go ahead.
You can raise him.
You were there first.
You had him.
Faster than me.
He's lost a step. He's lost a step.
I've lost more than one step. But my voice is still strong, James Busby from Northside, Elizabeth. I just want to clarify something that Monroe said, and me and Monroe were classmates from nineteen eighty-five, so we go way back. We, as black people and brown people, we understand the white community. We understand white people, just say, white people understand us. We have a lot of interracial couples, a lot of biracial children, I have two wonderful white grandsons of my own. One of my grandsons plays ball with Dan's grandson at Bridgewater. I have two wonderful biracial kids. Me and the Browns and the Cows, we joke all the time about all the white people we got in our family. Okay? So, with that being said, maybe the Northside has been neglected for so long because we've been referred to as those people, you people, and on occasion raccoons. We all know that's a racist statement. We know that. Also because maybe when our former slash city manager Bill Marx was here, I went to the table ten years ago, when my mother died, meeting with Bill Marx behind closed doors, ways we can improve the city, bringing a hundred and forty thousand dollars to the table to improve our parks, not just Victory Park. And when I say we understand white people, we all know how many good white people there are, just like there's good black people. That pavilion was my grandmother and my mother's property, which was gifted to my great-grandfather, Mr. Gully, by Claude Hubbard, a white man who loved black people. So, I don't want to hear this talk about understanding white people, understanding black people, we all one. And we are here to make our community better. We don't need this racial bigotry, and like I told you, Mr. Vigansky, Daniel, there's a lot of interracial couples, a lot of biracial kids, we don't need that junk. We are one. And in the eyes of the Lord, we are minorities, whether some believe it or not. I'm not a you people or a raccoon, I'm Mr. James David Lee Busby, Vicky Busby son. And I will keep on being the voice, because I believe maroon and white, and I love my city, and I love my people who are close to me. Whether you white, black, Mexican, red, I don't give a damn. And that's what we're going to do here in Buchanan. We're bringing everybody together. And that's what we will continue to do. If you don't want to be a part of the solution, go, simple as that, go. We don't need you. Don't care what color you are, whether you're white or black. You don't want to answer, answer to the problem, don't come. And I'm sure a lot of people, both white and black, in here believe the same way I do. A lot of good people in this city. I know it, you all know it, everybody knows it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Haley, you're in there. Here, here, three twenty block street. I would just like to say...
You can move that down if you want. There you go.
Monroe, to you, every black person sitting in here is educated. Every black person sitting in here is a homeowner. Some of the homes, including mine, have been passed down from our mothers and fathers. We take pride in our neighborhood, we take pride in our homes. Every step of the way, Rich and Ashley, they have contacted us, we have met with them, we have told them what we want. We want to keep our neighborhood a residential neighborhood. We don't want businesses coming in. We want this type of zoning, that type of zoning. We have been at the table, again, every step of the way. And we're aware of gentrification, of what that can do. But we're not concerned about that right now, we're trying to rebuild our neighborhood, and that's it. And we're working with Rich and Ashley and the city. Nobody from outside is coming in and trying to influence us. The people that are not at the table, we let them know what's going on, that's why they are here tonight. And I thank you all for showing up, because that's what we have to do. We have to continue to show up, take care of what's ours, continue to respect what's ours, and not let any outsiders come in and try to influence us. And I know everybody here, from Mrs. Wake's, the oldest one, she's probably got a louder voice than any of us, if needs to be, and she will stand up for what's hers. I just want to say that. We're not worried about somebody coming in and taking what belongs to us.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a, a comment?
There comes somebody.
First, I wanted, Haley Jones, one four five three four Main Street, also owner of Chunks. I wanted to get up here and say thank you to everyone who has shared our posts and been supportive of us opening the ice cream shop here in the city of Buchanan. There are a couple things that I wanted to address, as I have got messages from a few people. I do understand bringing more people into the duck pond is going to bring more trash, it needs to be cleaned up, and that's not what we're trying to do. Every Saturday, if you go down there and watch us, while we're working on the guard check, me and my eighteen-month-old walk around the duck pond with a trash bag and pick up the trash out there, and we will continue to do so outside of our ice cream shop. And I have had quite a few people reach out to me and say that they do not feel where we are putting the ice cream shop is a good place, because the building is over a hundred years old. I'm letting everybody know now, we're not trying to change it in any way, we're trying to bring the building back to its original character, we are putting bronze windows in there, we're putting a bronze door, we're not changing anything about it, but upgrading the stuff that was put in by the city when the windows were broken up. And if you walk down there now, you'll see there, well, there was white vinyl windows with boards on them that were on there, we have since got them replaced, and the door gets replaced this week. That's all I got.
Thank you. I think some of the older folks in the audience might be able to tell you, there was an ice cream shop in that building before.
Yes.
So, you're not the first. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Hello, everyone. Nice to see everyone in the city of Buchanan. My name is Shelley White, I'm the Bering County Treasurer. I'm here, I give you a little background on myself. I started at the treasurer's office in two thousand seven. I worked, started part-time in the office auditing homestead exemptions, which all of you know, many people have second homes in southwest Michigan, since we do have, you know, the lakefront, which is very beautiful. From there in two thousand ten, I moved, moved into a full-time position, and I became the chief deputy treasurer for, for my predecessor, Brett Wacowski. And from there in two thousand twenty, I was appointed treasurer of Bering County, and then successfully won the election that year in the August primary. So, seventeen years of being in the treasurer's office, I've gained a lot of experience and knowledge over the years on what's going on, listening to, going to the communities, listening to what's going on. I understand, you know, I'm a conservative person. I stay under budget. And spending money, I'm kind of like Mr. Vigansky here. It, I cringe, it's like, oh God, I have to spend an extra dime or something, I, I just try to keep it as conservative as possible. But helping the community, that's what I'm here for. I know there's a lot of delinquent taxes out there, that's what I, that's what my office deals with, is the delinquent taxes. I'm here to help you taxpayers, whatever we need to do, whether it's government funding, payment assistance, whether there's exemptions out there. I've spent a few times out here in this office, in the afternoon, helping taxpayers with delinquent taxes, setting up a payment plan to avoid that tax foreclosure. Honestly, we don't want to take your home, your property, your business, we'll do whatever it takes to keep you in there. That's what we want. We don't want them, it costs me money. And like I just said, I'm conservative, I don't want to spend any more money than I have to. So, like I said, I'm not only here for the taxpayers, I'm also here for the community, for the board as well. I work very closely with our local treasurers. Deb, I've gone to municipalities to help them as well, the treasurers. Tax collection isn't a simple process, and there are, there are the struggles, not only for the new people, the new treasurers, but also, you know, the older ones that have been around a while, things are constantly changing. I go to you. You can call me, I'll come to you. I don't have a problem with that at all. Bering County is our county. And I want to be a part of it, I want to be, to help you, keep you in your home and such. Like I said, we, the biggest part of my job is collecting delinquent taxes, but we also do a number of other things as well. I'm on committees for the Land Bank Authority, helping and listening to, like, the programs, the CBDG chill program and such, the county does that as well. So, we're also doing government programs as well, getting the funding and such. So, I just would like to introduce myself again, Shelley White, Bering County Treasurer, and I'd appreciate your vote on August sixth in the primary election. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Busy microphone tonight.
I was wondering, if you could please invite someone to come and talk to us, whoever the appropriate person in the city is, about the process the city uses to entice businesses into town. You know, is it proactive? Is it reactive? So, by proactive, I mean, do we have a list of identified businesses that we think would be good to come here, that would fill a need, so that when, say, the Moose Lodge comes up for sale, we can run right to the office and call? Because we've been networking with these people, call them up and say, hey, we have this property available for you, and we think, maybe you should come and take a look at it and see if it fits your needs. So, you know, by now, because that place has been for sale for a while, I'm pretty sure that someone has called Grand Traverse Pie Company and told them to come down here and open up a business.
Now, we're talking.
I know, they have great friendship. So, and by reactive, I guess I mean we sit on our duff and do nothing and, and hope that someone we like shows up. So, there's somebody in charge there, right? They could do a report?
Say, they're sitting right there.
We have called a lot of people.
I have a list. And there's just a lot of issues with that building.
Well, I'm sure, and that's probably why it's only a hundred and fifty thousand, so, and on that corner, it should be two or three times that amount of money, which they could now use their savings to improve the building. So, you know, there's always a way to word it, to, to do it.
We have seen a decline right now in businesses wanting to purchase buildings.
Understood. Just wondering what the process the city uses is, and I'm sorry, but I don't know who you ladies are. Or why you're the people that are in charge.
What's your name?
It was a good question.
It's Mary Gilbert.
Mary Gilbert.
Yes. It's Mary Gilbert.
Oh.
Yeah, I do. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
It's Mary, isn't it? It's Mary, right?
All right.
Going once, going twice. Okay, let's move down to executive comments, city manager?
Okay, I'll, I'll be brief. This is relating to the budget. We are in the final throes of preparing the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the general and street funds and estimating projections for the current fiscal year. The associated budgets will be presented at the May twenty-eighth meeting, along with the water and sewer fund budget. I am confident the financials will be favorable with surplus projections for this year in the general, streets, and water and sewer budgets. In addition, balanced budgets for all funds will be presented for next fiscal year. See you on the twenty-eighth.
Cliffhanger, how are you?
Oh, man.
Okay, Commissioner Swam?
Thank, big thank you to the Lions Club, you guys continue to support this community left and right, and it doesn't go unnoticed from Easter to glasses collection, I saw Jerry at McDonald's collecting coins a week or two ago, to donations like we sell tonight, so thank you very much, we really appreciate that. I can't remember if I mentioned it at the last meeting, but the common cleanup, actually, I think it's been in between there, the common cleanup, a big thank you to everybody that put the time, effort, energy into that. I stopped down there, took a, took a look at the work and the refresh, I, I just really appreciate that support from our, our volunteers. Rich, really appreciate your commentary related to how proactive the community is, both the neighbors and the city, on the gentrification topic at hand. I know there's not a silver bullet, per se, to, to solve that issue across any city in this country, and I just appreciate your explanation and the time and effort that's going in to consider it. And then, funny you bring up a, a little bit on your comment, Mary, for, for a few years, it's been a, a low-level topic about getting a feasibility study done on what businesses make sense for this area, and it's kind of reignited again in some general conversation of Rich and Ashley, I have been having, so, who knows, maybe there'll be more to come on that, if we can find, find an opportunity to help identify what makes sense, so we can better target our effort. But it is a, it is a conversation that we're having, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Vigansky?
Rich Murphy, send him all the emails, to all the questions that you want, ask him all the questions that you want answered. That is his job. And as far as the Moose, I have talked to almost every steakhouse in the area, I've talked to Mexican restaurants out of Chicago, I have talked to, I want a steakhouse personally. And I've hit all the steakhouses, I've talked to Ms. Capron a couple of times about it, chased her about the prices, talked to a guy in La Porte just two weeks ago that has several friends, that runs a guiding service for fishing and hunting in the area, that knows Buchanan quite well, but I've been shoving on hard on that, because it's a beautiful piece of property. And, you know, I don't want to undercut your commission, but I've been saying, just offer something, so they come to the table. Right. I lost all train of thought, so I'm just going to stop right there and pause it, no.
Mr. Money?
Mr. Murphy, though.
Mr. Money?
Okay, well, I want to start out by thanking the Lions Club and everything that they do, especially with helping, you know, our police department and the funding that you've done prior to this, so thank you very much. Had the opportunity to be at a program with Brian Murphy and Rich Martin, The Tree Friends. They did a great program for Tree City USA at the middle school and handed out trees to the, the fifth grade students. It was really a great program, very interesting. They did, you know, throw out a few things there that wasn't known, and the kids seemed quite interested, so thank you to those guys. Buchanan Cleanup Days, had a great time shoveling gravel at Ravish Park with some of the ladies and gentlemen that are, that are here. I don't know how hard the rest of them worked, but I know how hard we worked. So, thank you for everything that was, happened up there. Also want to thank the Northside Neighborhood for being here tonight and, you know, showing the support for your community, for, you know, what we're doing up there. It's just great to see the enthusiasm that's been brought to the table, so thank you for that. Once again, I want to thank all of the staff here at City Hall, they do such a great job, and this group of fine gentlemen sitting here. Thank you very much, and that's all I have. Oh, Happy Memorial Day, have a great Memorial Day.
Time's prayed? Nine AM?
Ten.
Ten AM?
Ten, oh, prayers start, yeah, steps off at ten, lineups at nine.
Get your donuts at Swam's.
Get your donuts up at Swam's before you head downtown. And get your hot dogs at, at your park.
I wanted to also thank the Lions Club for their generous donation tonight, thank you very much for that, on top of everything else that you do. I wanted to send my condolences out to the family of Wayne Rider, who passed away last week. And I also want to send out my condolences to the family of Wendy Murphy. Some might remember Wendy Hesser, who was a first-grade teacher for a long time, and she passed away too. she passed away too. And so, we're thinking about those families. Just really briefly on the gentrification thing. And, and I know some people in this room will say, oh, he thinks he's done so much. I, when, when I got elected in 2018, Mark Weed and I were on the same page about the Northside. And we pushed really hard to make improvements. And one of the things I'm really proud of is the fact that Rich is doing the things that Rich and Ashley are doing, and they're taking their time, and they're making good decisions, and they're working so closely with you to make sure they make the right I have no worries about gentrification because how close we are with you guys. The other thing I want to hit on tonight, that some, sometimes we forget that the people in this building work really hard to improve themselves, and I have two letters here, and I apologize, there's been a lot going on in the last few weeks, and I should have read these earlier, but I want to read them tonight. And one of them is from Michigan State University Extension. It says, Dear Mayor Dennison, please help us in congratulating Emma Leacy on her successful completion of the Michigan State University Extension Zoning Administrator Certificate and Master Citizen Planner status. To earn these credentials, individuals must complete thirty-six hours of training and pass a hundred and fifty-five question exam. In order to maintain the credential, Emma will be invited to invest six hours per year of her time to further their planning and zoning knowledge. We truly value your community's investment in training. Serving the public good is nuanced and can also be technical, adequate training for your appointed and elected official, lowers legal risks, and provides knowledge to make better decisions. Thank you again, and please join us in congratulating Emma Leacy on the successful completion of the Zoning Administrator Certificate Program and Master Citizen Planner Status. So, a very big congratulations to Emma Leacy for that.
All right, congratulations, Emma.
And then, this letter I received in April, and it says, Dear City Commissioners, the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks is an organization that promotes and educates Michigan's clerks. Through our Michigan Professional Municipal Clerk Certification Program, clerks are recognized for their knowledge of the multifaceted clerk's profession. We're pleased to announce that your city clerk, Calla Langston, has met the program criteria and has attained a Level One MyPMC certification. Calla's commitment to education and desire to obtain certification clearly defines commitment to the clerk's profession and your community. On behalf of the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerk Board of Directors, I ask you to join us in congratulating Calla Langston for this accomplishment and well-deserved recognition. Congratulations. And that's all I have, I would take a motion to adjourn. Thank you all for coming tonight.
I'll move.
I'll second. Do we roll call?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
You're good.
Is our picture gonna be up today in this meeting? Our pictures weren't up last meeting. No, here. It was just like that.